...leaders to understand how important it is for them to teach in the district's PLC process. Really good, a nice read, too. She learned what you learned from that.
The Reader's Digest version.
my biggest takeaway is in the lack of state assessments, which we only have through eighth grade, so nine, 10, 11, 12, now there's a bill that may... But anyway, my point is, is creating teacher teams to come together and create an assessment that would be used on both ends for each of our contents. It's gonna take some work, but it's something that there's value in. Like, what do we hang our hat on? If it's ACT, which hasn't moved in 50 years, other than plus or minus point whatever, and the data we used previously just was people that voluntarily took the test, now it's everybody that wants to take, or everybody has to take the test even though not everybody has chosen through their plan to go to college. So, there are just so many good things. And then also the PLC process of what did our kids learn these last five days? Like, what evidence do we have? What line of evidence do we have in the last five days? And so, anyway, it's a great read, and again, it's called Learning by Doing. We started in 12 with, let's just jump into this thing. And we've learned a lot, and we continue to learn how we can refine and get better. So, that's my reading. I can speak lots. I'm gonna eat this part.
I just think, real quickly, that just re- we're doing the right work. We just need to refine it. And, you know, the answer is really within our people. And, you know, getting some help from the outside, but working together and having this professional learning community mindset and being collaborative and helping each other. And that's why my recommendation a couple of months ago was to go against that merit-based pay, because that didn't, that just didn't fit our work-together model. It didn't fit more of a, I gotta do my work and get my kids. And it's gonna help us double down on, you know, professional learning communities.
So, a quick question on that one, merit pay. Do you know if any other districts want a bit, or did it?
I think about, about half of them did.
I watched the committee meeting. I don't know which one where they were talking about it, and whoever, I think it was Lincoln Villanueva was talking about, but like, he said 17 out of 41 opted in. And he said, and then there was questions from the representative senate, I don't know if it was the senate committee or the house. And they're like, and the question was, it seems to undermine, or people spoke against it. It's like, well, it can be used, you can give it to a team. Like, he was acting like, but I don't think that's, it's not. I think that he was saying things that were not in the bill. So, to make it sound good, like, we can word it, like, there's no, you can't, like, you could distribute among the whole first grade team or whatever, but in the bill, you can't do that, so.
There were more superintendents who said that they signed up for it at the date, I don't know, 5th, December 1st. But you can also back out before you actually get it implemented. And there was a few of them that said, we just signed up, so we had more time to evaluate. So, there might be. And the trouble with that is, is there's still X amount of dollars, 30-something million? So, that means those districts will get to share.
I was hoping it was phased out and they would just spread that out.
And I don't know if you remember, but I felt like that was something Tom Peterson was really interested in.
Yeah.
When we talked at our meeting, I think he...
Well, merit pay sounds great.
Yeah, and market-based compensation, we like to say all those types. Because I think that's another, that's a bill I think that might even be talked about right now.
No, and one of the things about that as well is the qualifications, like, to get it, you have, like, some of it, you, or, we don't have schools to qualify for some of the qualifications to get the higher pay. And so, it's not as much, like, it's, it's uneventually.
Not fair.
So, I, I spoke to a teacher who works in another district, and they're, I think it was Weber District, and they opted out of it.
They did, last week they voted.
Did they? Yes. Because I knew they were one of the ones that went in originally, but now they're back.
They had the educator survey, and most, everybody's opposed to it, because, like I said, it goes against the collaboration. It makes it more about my pay and my performance than the performance of the school as a whole.
Well, we, we're, we're an hour behind?
About that.
Well, maybe an hour and 45 minutes, 15 minutes. But anyway, we had passed around on the thread, you know, do we have any work session on the 19th, 25th? And I just thought, well, we're together right now, we can take some time. And this is all about, Corey has the date of when the RFPs?
RFPs, yeah.
RFPs are due, and right now, there are companies feverishly working on their presentations and their documents to turn in. And there has been concern feeling how much support we do have to go forward from where we're at right now. You know, a little bit like Stephanie said, you know, are we gonna go for a bond in a couple of years? Or, you know, are we gonna try to do truth to taxation right now and, and move forward with working on getting the ninth grade to the high schools? You know, are we gonna, you know, we need, we need elementary schools. Both Lakeview and North Park are both extremely overcrowded and extremely old. And so, you know, the four middle school thought, and I, and I just felt like, we need to, for Corey's sake to some degree, if we're not gonna go to truth and taxation, it's probably not too late to shut it down. Or, let them know that, hey, we might go for truth and taxation next year. And another thing to throw in is the fact that, right now, I think Neil would concur, they're talking about getting us 4% on the WPU. But the trouble with that is, is much if you understand compound interest in your bank account, already, the other districts are ahead of us. So, as they give 4%, we give 4% unless in all employees' compensation. So, I know Karen had mentioned at last, last board meeting, I believe in work session, that we probably should try to see if we can get a little bit more for truth taxation, to see if we can try to catch up. Is it, did I, am I misquoting you? I remember you saying something like that.
I don't know about catch up, but I think that we should be able to...
Try to get in 1% or 2% more maybe than...
I, I think we should look at it and make sure that that, to me, that's the highest priority, is making sure we keep our good people. And then, I don't, I don't...
So, I guess, yeah, that's what this meeting's all about, and we're kind of...
Well, I just have a question about truth and taxation. Sure. I'm not really smart at this stuff.
Oh.
But, now, it's my understanding that if you do truth and taxation every year, that, yeah, there's an increase. But if you wait and hold off for five years, then that's when we got in trouble last time, because the increase was so huge.
Yeah. Well, it just depends on how much it takes.
If you do it a little bit every year, then it's not so painful. That's, is that true?
Well, what it is, is every year, the amount of money that you generate is, is what, and Neil, correct me or whatever, but when you get more value in your community, the amount that is assessed to each individual is less, because there's more of us, and the values are to generate that amount of money. And so, if we went to truth and taxation every year, you'd keep, you'd keep the rate the same every year, and...
So, you'd get a little bit more?
Yeah.
So, every year we get 45 million? And it doesn't matter if a thousand new homes are built? We get 45 million unless we do...
We get growth.
We get growth, but...
It's valuation.
It's kind of like, I picture it like a seesaw. I don't know, maybe that's, but, but like, home values go up, tax rate goes down. We're trying to keep it balanced. And so, they're trying to keep it like this. And so, if we put more here, we gotta take off here to try to keep us having the same revenue year over year. Except if we have growth, then if we have increased growth, then we get that growth. But, the idea is if, if we say, well, we don't want you to take off our balance, we wanna stay up here, then we can capture that larger, a percentage of more revenue, so we're not just staying flat. We're actually increasing our revenues to pay.
Well, people like to say, my taxes never go down, but they did this year.
Yeah, they did.
So, and, and, you know...
So, can we property insurance compensate for it?
When was the last time?
Property insurance compensation?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
When was the last time we did a truth and taxation then?
2023.
23.
But before that, it had been five years.
It had been a long time.
And when we do a tru-, sorry.
And we had a lot of people come, because we haven't done it for so long.
A lot, meaning like 12.
12, 11.
Well, okay. But yeah.
With, with the truth and taxation, if I remember right, you have different, is it, it's levy? Do you have to, you have to specify where that taxation is going to go? Is that accurate?
So, we have two we can change, our capital levy and our board levy.
And the capital goes to schools?
Yeah, it goes to bill, capital is, in accounting terms, anything over $2,500 for our policy is considered a capital expense for a single item. So, anytime we upgrade a building, say you put a bunch of IT tech in it, that's a capital expense. So, it's not just for construction of buildings, but it's all those other things that go inside of buildings that we can use that funds for to pay for those things.
And then the others?
Anything on that list Corey showed us today?
Yep.
But technically, we have enough money for those things that we wouldn't...
Yes.
But if we wanted to pay more for our teachers, then we would be touching the other levy.
The board.
We might, in talking with Neil this past month, didn't you say that there was some revenue that was coming in that you may, could help offset? The board levy is where we would need to increase for teacher compensation.
Yes.
But then, you and I were talking, and I said, and I think Tiffany talked about this in her email, what other sources of revenue do we have?
So, we have, if everyone's familiar with lecture learning, that tax increment is coming online this year. Based on my conversation with Neil Port, that estimated value will produce about $270,000 of revenue this year. That's a very conservative estimate. That doesn't include personal property tax. Everything that goes inside that building, that's just the real estate in the building itself. I think that probably more like 400, 500 will end up getting from that building and new revenue. That's just one example of new development going in that would bring us new revenue that's not already accounted for.
And can that be used for teacher salaries?
Yeah.
Or does that have to be counted?
No, that, so that, every new property development gets hit for all our levies.
Okay.
So, we have a good voted levy, we have a board levy, we have the school program levy. It doesn't really impact us too much. We have a charter school levy, but we don't get that money, it just flows through. Same thing with our tax increment finance levies, those just flow through as well.
And then the other added revenue that we were talking about is new growth. And you said that you were gonna try and see how much new growth money would be coming in.
In the past, we've done about 200, about 2.75% of new growth.
So, dollar value would be?
Um, I'm not sure on the exact, I wanna say about 55 million is the number that pops into my head is what new growth was. And so, that, from here, that produces a couple hundred, less than a million dollars of new revenue for us, on the growth side.
Probably, our collective levies are like 0.00...
68.
67.
It floated down this year a lot because of property values going up. So, I think we're at 0.0053 this year.
So, what you take is that 55 million and times it by that 0.00 now?
Yeah.
Is that whatever, whatever that 0.00 number is?
Yeah, and it's kind of hard to estimate property tax, because there's abatements, there's relief for people who are in income limits. Then they collect about 95%. So, there's a series of calculations that gets to that final number to calculate your final levy. But...
Like 300,000?
Well...
Yeah.
Another thing that's concerning, talking about salaries, is, is while they say they're, they're talking about 4% increase, is part of that 4% comes from this minimum tax, or the minimum school program? You know, we, you've all heard talk about the line, maybe Stephanie has. But the line, everything is continuous above the line, the lower line are all these programs.
Yep.
And they're trying to shut these programs down, and then say that, we're giving you money in the WPU, but then we still have to fund digital teaching and learning, we still have to fund, I'm on loss with the 4 or 5.
Professional staff, professional learning.
Formula, all those types of things.
Wasn't our dual language commercial level?
Yeah, dual language. We don't get a ton for that, but they're trying to set up everything that they do. And so...
So, they're taking items that were below...
That were funded.
That were funded, and now they're gonna put it above.
So, they get to say, 4 is really awesome, but they may have taken 2 from the below the lines. So, really, it feels like 2, but they get a report 4. Pretty smoking mirrors.
So, they...
Just clarify, who's "they"?
Lectures.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, it's, I just wanna make sure I know who the "they" are.
Right now, there is...
It's them and us.
It feels like it.
There's $28 million of programs on the chopping block for EAC. So, EAC is Executive Appropriations Committee. So, the way it works is that Public Ed Appropriations makes a recommendations to executive groups for cuts that aren't part of the minimum school programs, all below the line programs. They want to monkey with that. And right now, they're about $28 million in cuts, but they balance that with $28 million in new money. Most of that is going towards either NESS and at-risk program increases. And they'll throw some into what we call flexible allocation. So, they take these programs, they cut them, they throw them in flexible allocation, you get like 10% of your money on that, and they put it on a per people basis.
That's kind of the big districts, when you mention NESS and at-risk, the bigger districts have, they, they get a lot of some money in at-risk money, so that's always balanced off of sending NESS to us. And we get at, at-risk, we refer to it as EARS.
Yeah.
And what is it? Do you even know, I don't even know what that acronym stands for.
Enhancement of At-Risk.
Enhancement, Aggrastion, thank you.
You're like a dictionary.
So, Steve, are we, are we having this meeting to decide whether we should go forward on the bond, or to do?
Well, I think we're talking about truth and taxation right now.
Truth and taxation. So, if we did, I know you said, I don't know if this was last month or the month before, we talked about doing truth and taxation, everything, and, and then, like, for example, moving K through 1 to Foothill, for example?
Well, that was one of the ones, I think the main thing is, is truth taxation.
Two different things, but doing piece by piece to get what we wanted to get, is that correct?
Yes, but I think the Foothill thing would be further back than, than getting the money...
Well, I'm just saying, that's one of the problems.
Yeah, there's so many possibilities that we're, we've, we've actually been thrown about seeing what sticks with you guys. I mean, I, I hope that sounds okay.
I'm just saying, it's why we're having this meeting.
We've got a bunch of...
So, the idea is to start, to start, take what we wanted in the bond, but take it in chunks, and being the first chunk that makes sense to start is to get an eighth grade to the high schools. And divide it in those middle schools, so that those buildings, those old two middle schools that we have are more usable and they're student, not so crowded.
300?
300 up, 300 down south, and 200 up north.
So, we have a mandate to do that now, or do we need to do truth and taxation?
No, we'd have to do truth and taxation.
So, we need about $60 million for two high school expansions, on the low end. High end, $70 million, plus design costs of about $4 million. So, we're looking at $80 million overall. We have 22 in capital reserve. So, math doesn't work out, we cannot do this without raising taxes. We have to, we have to do that. So, the bond to service $70 million would be about $4.5 million a year. So, to be able to pull this off, we need $4.5 million of new revenue every year to service that bond.
And that would just do the additions to the high school.
That's right.
And we could do that in truth and taxation?
Yes.
Yeah.
If we wanted to increase teacher salaries, we would need another 2 million.
So, a 3% increase in teacher salaries after steps and lanes would result in about $4.7 million cost. We will probably get between 2.2 and 2.5 in WPU. So, we're looking at, we need another $2 million somewhere on the board levy if we wanted to go that route. Now, if they give us 4, that was based on a 2.5% increase in WPU. They give us 4%, that gives us a lot more money to be able to do that.
As long as they don't make us pay for things that...
Now, now, that wouldn't help us to compete with other districts' increases, though, because the state would be giving that, so it would only equalize the cost.
It would equalize it, but...
It'd still be the lowest paid district, right?
Uh, more than likely. We're pretty, we're within range of cash, and Weber, we're about $1,500 off on our starting salary with them. So, it's not a whole lot there, but if we wanna be able to make up for past lean years, we could be able to bring some money in for that.
So, when we talked, well, since we had this email, we've had this discussion, there's, I wrote down some questions that I thought about, like, what to kind of think, how should we do this, how should we do this? And I think one of the things we have to decide as a district and as a board is what are our priorities as far as what, what's most important now and in the future? We can't just like, we'll work right here, because if we get that, we build two new elementary schools, and, but, but I don't think that's the best solution to just, anyhow. So, I, I'm just gonna tell you my thought process, and then you can, I'll be quiet. But, like, what are our priorities? What, you know, kind of going back to PLC, like, what's, what are the big goals? What are we, what do we want? And how are we gonna get there? How do we know when we get there? And what if we do, if we don't have, you know, it's kind of the same process of thinking. And so, and what is the best flow? Like, we know, like, the bond didn't pass, it would've been lovely if we just did this and then we could build that, but that didn't happen. And so, as we chunk things, if that's the direction we wanna go, what's the best flow for chunking things? Where is our greatest need? How can we alleviate some of these elementary schools, as well as make the flow work better? So, I think, so I was, I've been spinning in my head, you know, for a few weeks since we talked about this, and I was thinking, okay, well, elementary schools, I just, I live in Lakeview, I know those kids, I, my kids went there, and I'm sure North Park is the same, even though I'm not there. It is, I mean, this is extreme language, but it's not, it is not fair, it is not equitable, it is not academically safe or sound or best. And those areas are our highest impacted, you know, impacted populations that, you know, and so I just feel like, that, something has to be done to address that. Now, whether that's, but I don't think the right correction is saying, well, we need to build two new elementary schools. I don't think that's visibly responsible, and I don't think that gets us where we want to be in the end. But I think there's some things we can do with a smaller amount of money, like when we're talking about elementary additions, you know, find some money to do that reboundry and alleviate those problems. If you take, just like the middle schools, if we take however many kids out of Lakeview, that's more doable. It's still not ideal, but it's doable. And then, if our priority, and I personally think this is the way we should go, but I'm just speaking for me, is I think these grade benefits that we've talked about, the K5, 68, 912, is most beneficial academically, and with all the other things that we're talking about. And so, in order to make that flow work, I think we have to start with high school, right? Like, in the high school addition. And so, in my thinking, I think we need to do truth and taxation. But within that, truth and taxation, we need to, and I, we have whatever, 22 million in capital reserves, maybe we use that to get on board with these, make a decision, which elementary schools are we getting to expand, and let's start boundary study, and let's give them six months, and let's, I mean, it wouldn't be this year, obviously, but, you know, like, get some of those, we need to relieve those populations and give them the best we can, but then, we also need to start moving on this next step. And I think truth and taxation gives us those funds to then start building out the high school additions, and then, that's the most logical flow to me. And I don't, I mean, I don't know the ins and outs, and I think that there's lots of discussion about elementary schools and some of those things, and how we can adjust for those things, but, as I've, I've honestly been spinning on this since last month, and then we had the facilities advisory committee, and talked about some of the possibilities, and, and I've thought about this a lot, just as my personal, like, my kids are not gonna be affected by any of this. This is not a personal life. Well, I want the best, like, my, like, we're done with Lakeview, then it's, it's over. But I know, I, I care about every kid in this district, and I care about what is best for students and teachers and paraprofessionals, and everybody that is involved with those kids. And when we were talking about earlier with the special ed rooms and some of the behavior things we've got, we've got to provide safe, strong spaces for our students. And I think we need to, I mean, I'm not saying, let's just go out and tax the community to death. I don't think we need to do it in a reasonable way. But we have got to, and then we've got to back it up or precursor it with whatever it is of, you said no to the bond, we understand that. We still have these needs, so we're trying to do it in a more level approach. I think there's a PR campaign that has got to happen, and there's gonna be people upset regardless, but when we come from the point of, it's not just like, let's vote to see if we wanna raise taxes. Well, nobody's gonna vote to raise taxes. But do we care about our community, do we care about our students? And, and that's our job as the board, right? That's our job as the, the school board, is to do what's best for our school district, the students and everybody that's involved in that. And it's making hard decisions, but it's, we know education, I don't know, I'll get on a soap, I won't get on my soapbox, but, you know, we wanna change the world, we teach them. I, I, most of you know I served a mission, I was in Boston, Massachusetts, and I would teach people, and they didn't see anything but what was around them. They had no vision, they didn't know there was a gift of life available to them. Because everybody they saw had five kids, starting at 15, and you had more kids, you had the more welfare you got, and you just stuck there. When you, when you give them vision, and you give them education, and you show them opportunities, then they see beyond what their home life is, or what their immediate circumstances are. And if we can't provide that in our education facilities and in what we're doing, I don't think we're doing our jobs.
Do you think the elementary is a higher priority than the middle school?
I think funding-wise, that's, I don't think there's a way to, I think with what they said, like, if we alleviate some of these concerns, I think it's a process, but we don't have the money to do it all. That's the problem.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that we can go build new middle schools, but to me, the middle school issue is, is equal in priorities.
Well, that's why I think we get the, that's why I think we get the highest, the ninth grade out.
Yeah.
And then we, and then once we get the ninth grade out, that alleviates the middle school, because now we have the two ACYI.
See, and Julie, I, I thought that, that my, from what I heard, that we would, we would, like the Willard School, we would put K1 and Foothill, and then that would alleviate the elementary schools, to give them more room, take those kids out of those elementary schools, which would give those elementary schools...
And I think that's an option, but...
Well, that's an easy thing to do, and it's cheap.
So, we talked about that, and it, it is an option. Corey said it would cost 4 million to over-open Foothill.
Do, do you wanna move in there for one year or five years? Because if it's just one year, and it's a stopgap for one year, then we put up white boards that have been removed, and you live in it for a year. But if we're gonna be longer than that, then we look at, what do we need to do for the kiddos that are gonna be there?
Then starts the argument, our parents didn't like that idea.
No, I was gonna say...
They do not like that idea, and it's gonna impact Lakeview, that are blockers, but anyway, it's like the argument of, do you put 4 to 5 million dollars into Lakeview, or do you put 4 to 5 million dollars into an addition at Discovery, and maybe add some money to it and, and reboundry there for now? Because even rebuilding North Park and Lakeview, if we rebuild them about the size that they are now, because we're, we're kind of seeing, golden spike is hard. It's at 970 students, and that's not great. So, if you rebuild those schools around 750, and you rebuild North Park and Lakeview right now?
They're already...
You're full.
Yeah.
So, you know, you, we have, we still would have to...
But I'm saying...
We're still needing additions and maybe a new school. Yeah.
Yeah, rebuilding helps to add on, so that's gonna take you a few years at least. So, I'm just saying, the Foothill thing seemed very...
I think that would be really hard for the community to be, I think that's less appealing to...
Because it, it only works to bust Lakeview there. It wouldn't be the surrounding kids that would go there. It wouldn't be Discovery kids that are going there.
And I'm just saying, you know, I, I have never liked the Willard thing. I just personally haven't. But I tell you, there are parents out there that absolutely love it.
They love it. It was one of the highest performing schools.
Cause they really do love it, so that's why.
But does everyone in Willard and Perry pretty much bust besides the kids that live right around Willard and Perry?
Another thing we talked about is, is it better to take four or five million dollars and place it into Foothill to use it for two to three years to then say, it's just as old as Lakeview and we're getting rid of it? Or do you put that money, and I don't have the answer, this is rhetorical. Or do you put that money into Discovery that can be used for 20 years and, and allow for growth at Discovery? You know, do you?
And I see what you're saying. I'm just saying that takes a couple extra years when this is a quick fix.
We, we talked about too, with Corey, we talked about like, I even went to him and was like, all right, North Park, could we build half a building there? Could we build a wing and then finish it later? You know, like, what can we do to start moving that direction? But it's.
So I, I think the catalyst to this meeting that we're having right now, in the facilities advisory committee, as we're talking about the projects, we also, there was, there was a lot of talk about concern of the public and what kind of, what's the right word?
Image?
Backlash, image, whatever. Because, because of the bond. The bond failed, the public told us no. And then if we go around, or if we go back and raise taxes and do it anyway, what kind of public image is that gonna give? And so, as I got thinking about that, um, the proposals from the architects and contractors are due a week from tomorrow. So they're working on them right now. And if the board, I, it's not a vote tonight, I know that. But if the board is really positive, saying, yes, we're gonna do truth and taxation in August, yes, we're gonna move forward with those projects, then we go. But if there's hesitation or thinking that truth and taxation needs to be used for something else, the dilemma with, so, and, and then at that point, we say, oh, we're gonna halt. You know, we have to pay the architect and contractors on the jobs that they've done already. The problem is, in these proposals, they have these teams of people that they're proposing to work on the projects for Bear River and for Box Elder. And a big part of choosing which firm to go with goes off of those teams.
Their, their experience.
For instance, um, Golden Spike Elementary, our site superintendent was Trent Sweeten with Hogan. He is hands down probably one of the best in this state. Even the architect was seeking his praises. You know, so let's say that he or somebody like him is on a team and we pick that firm because we want that team. Well, then if, in August, and, and I'm not saying positive or negative, just fact that if, if you as a board say, you know what? The public just doesn't have the, the palate for it right now. We need to wait a year. And so, we pause it, or we say, truth and taxation needs to go to something else, then we lose, or most likely lose that team that we've quote unquote hired. Even though we still have the firm, we've lost the team. And then so, that just gives me pause that like, whi- which way do we go? If the board feels like positive about it, let's go. Let's not put a halt to it. But if, if there's concerns or we're thinking maybe the money needs to go somewhere else or we need to wait a year, then maybe, maybe we put the brakes on it. And so, that's really where this, um, meeting kinda started. These thoughts of, you know, how, how do we work through this? And so, just let me know.
I don't know how these discussions have been going on, but I was shocked, um, a few weeks ago that someone asked me, um, the bond failed, but you're gonna do it anyway. That I'm hearing you're gonna do it anyway, is that true? And I had no idea what, I was shocked that someone would ask that. But where are they getting that information? How's that getting out? Is it being discussed in schools or?
I, I talked just as possibilities to our administrative team.
But so that's getting out?
Yeah, but I just said, hey, we just need to figure this out. I said, it's been a discussion. But the reality is, is we can't do what we promised. None of us can raise enough money. And we would have to do truth and tax, and I assume it's 90 million dollars annually, but I haven't ever got that answer. There is a cap.
That's one thing I wanted to ask Neil, is if, if we raise it to what you thought, that would generate four and a half million a year, then we would go get a lease revenue on.
That's correct.
Okay, so all we'd be doing is for 15-ish?
It's on a 20-year term.
20-year term. So we, we, that's what we'd be, we'd be getting.
We don't have to do truth and taxation every year. It stays, we do it this year and it stays.
So that's, that secures our revenue.
Just to clarify, the point was, is we're not, every, every meeting I was in, and I didn't miss any of them, was what are the other ways you can do? And so, our discussion has been, what are other ways? But we're not gonna do 220. There's just no way. So what other ways can we address elementary and the K five, six, eight, nine, 12? Like, I don't think, we, we're not gonna be able to replace the middle schools, but we are gonna be able to get rid of 25% of their students, which was a concern they had, which was, where are we gonna, you're not planning for growth. And we're not gonna have a school of 1,800. We're gonna have a school of 1,000 or 800, which is a lot different. So we have growth, we have land, we have design. All these concerns that we heard are able to manage this. If there was any way possible that we could do that and impact the elementary schools, I'd be all in favor of this. But we're not doing 220. And I have a, a gut that, I don't even know if a bond for 70 or 60, I don't like the bond idea.
But, but didn't the, like, the survey, they were in support of this stuff, but they just didn't like the plan?
Um, supportive.
I mean, they were on, if you looked at all of the, the ratings, they're like, yes, we think this is important. Yes, we think this is important. Yes, we support that. But it was just the plan that I don't think that they really, maybe didn't understand.
Well, knocking schools down because of unsupported missionary. They didn't like.
Well, actually, 68% said they supported that the middle schools and elementary schools were unsafe.
I think a bond would do well. If it was presented.
I'm sorry, I don't think you're ever gonna get somebody to vote to increase their taxes. I was talking to Mark Taylor in Logan. He said, we will never vote a bond again. We're gonna do truth and taxation and have.
In Logan.
Yeah.
Not cash.
Sorry, thank you. And we're gonna have a three to five-year plan and we increase salaries. I mean, if you see the salary amount that they have over there, they give their employees good salaries and they plan for future building with truth and taxation, because most of us aren't gonna vote to say, please increase.
And I thought that was the biggest thing, the cost, that was like.
That was the number one thing. It wasn't the plan necessarily, but 220 and 20 on a, you know, an average-sized home, 20 a month, that was, that was a big buy.
And another thing, I think that if, if, if the bond had been close, that's a whole different thing. But we crashed and burned. It was not close. I mean, it did get close, it says, yeah, we need to reconsider the bond, but it wasn't even close. So we need to look at another way. And I like the truth and taxation way. Don't you say Heidi Jo.
I actually had two people come to my home last night, a husband and a wife. And they asked me about the survey. They said, now, in the survey, it was asked about getting together community groups to help do options. So there's people out there that are talking about that. And they ask, how can we be a part of that? I said, I don't know, but I will find out. So it makes me a little nervous here when we're deciding those options. What are we gonna do this first or this first? Because we've told the community that we'll let them be part of that decision. They specifically, and I don't think, you know, they're fit for benefit, but they felt like that we needed to look at the elementary first. And I, I don't know what the answers are, but I think that we've put it out there that we're gonna let the community be a part of that discussion. So I, I feel very uncomfortable sitting here and deciding that when we've told the community we're gonna let them help.
And I think it's very important that when you have a structural plan, that you get stakeholders involved in refining that plan. I think it's really, really important to say, okay, when we look at the high schools, what do you see as the priorities? What are the needs? Can you give some input on that? But I, I also recognize that the truth and taxation of waiting to do the RFP puts us off another year on being able to get those building construction done, which then puts off having solutions for the middle schools another year and elementary schools another year whenever that happens. And I think people want to be part of the process, but they said, yes, I'd like to be part of the future bond proposal. It, it doesn't, we didn't say, you know, should we never move forward again without, you know, considering you in our plan? I think that is the responsibility of the board to have an idea or you bring together people and you get 12 different ideas about what it needs to be. And that is when people get upset about, you didn't listen to me anyway, because you're not aligned with what the structure needs to look like.
I was gonna add on, if I could just.
Yeah, please do.
I was just gonna say, I think that if we were to go out with a large truth and taxation ask, I, I mean, we're taking money out of our neighbors' pockets. I think we're gonna lose a lot of trust for the very reason Brian brought up, that people are already talking, you guys asked, we said no, and now you're gonna do it anyway? So, um, I think.
If we were doing 220 though, I can see that point. I think that's an inaccurate statement. We're gonna do it anyway.
But that's the perception. And perception is reality.
Right, like, that's why we, we have to run load with a lot of it.
I don't know if that's the perception. I have never heard that, Karen. I have never heard that. You may have heard that from a couple of people. I just don't believe that's the perception. I believe that we are elected as board members to make the decisions for our areas. And we have to make a decision. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't bring people in and get their input, but we have to have kind of a plan first to say, okay, we're looking at this. Help us tweak this to make it better. But, but I just don't think we can just have people come in and go all like, like.
I don't know what this question was on the, the survey, but that was what these people came and said, how can we be on that? We wanna be part of.
But they could still.
The option.
We can do the truth and taxation and do this and they can be a part of that.
Well, it's not to make the plan. The plan has to come from this room, a vision. But how we want to make the ninth grade fit on both ends, let's get some input. Let's get some figures. How do we want the elementaries to, how do we want to increase? You know, how do we handle the overcrowding? That would be, that would be good feedback.
I think it's also really important, something Tiffany brought up is like, you know, when it was mentioned that maybe the baseball field gets moved across to the north property. Well, then you need to ask the athletic directors. Having a plan for what you're doing means that those people who said, I would love to be part of the conversation, you have to invite the right people in. Anna Marie Hall, who comes from Lakeview every board meeting now, she would be great at giving input on certain grade levels, but her kids are not at the high school. So to just throw out a committee and then see what the priorities are, she's gonna be more concerned about Lakeview specifically and just put a portable there now. I mean, she has shared with us, she'd love a portable now. And I really respect and admire her and her contributions so much that if, if we bring together just, I mean, there were 380 people who want to participate. And a good portion of those are even employees in our own district office who say, let me be part of the plan. And they have a lot of value to add. But until we know what a plan is and the direction we're going.
If you don't have a plan.
We can't get a plan with that many people. I can't even agree for myself, like, I keep going back and forth. What's a plan about a board member? But to say, how do you get 380 people, narrow it down and get that many people to decide? When the people in this room, we're all still conflicted about it. I know what I need for elementary and I'm still conflicted because I hear each of your viewpoints on it and the feedback of what you receive from individuals. So I just don't know how you could get a variety of a group of stakeholders to come together.
You mentioned, you wanted a demographer. You would like the demographer to, to look at our county and look at where boundaries should be before we made any major changes.
For elementary.
For elementary. And I think that is the right direction to go, but that takes maybe six months. So that, if we wanna get it right for elementary, that pushes it back a little bit.
And what do you have an effect on truth and taxation? Because you do not have to have your building plan. You don't have to have, you don't have to have all that established. But we could go to truth and taxation and get the money planned, get the demographer and figure out.
I think that's where she was going.
Yeah, I think we could, with truth and taxation, no, we're not, I mean, we're hiring the architects for certain, the high school plans right now. That's it.
We're actually in design, we'll be hired for design phase.
Hiring for design phase, but.
Well, design and build.
Design and build, but it's not.
But the first step is designing, getting to that point.
That if, it's not the same as the bond where we have to list out all the possibilities and we're only tied to using that money.
No, we, well, we, we would, so we're gonna present how we're gonna change our levies for this. We'd probably mostly put it in capital, so it's tied to buildings. It's not tied to salaries. We could do additional for salaries as well. And that's how it looks like. So I, I wanna back this up a little bit here. We're trying to get support for going forth RFPs to begin design. That doesn't mean the designs are final, but we need to have a commitment that we will try and pursue truth and taxation in order to get to that point. Cause otherwise, we're just paying architect to design something that we're not building for two or three more years. I wanna point out, I drove around our district today for about four hours. I saw housing developments are going in. I saw the schools where they're at, our vacant land. Growth is coming, especially in Tremont area. I mean, it may be two, three years before that's fully developed out, even half of it developed out. But a lot of people are coming to the area and a lot of things are getting built. If, it takes three years to build a school from scratch. Need a year on that financing. So if you wanna build new elementary schools or new middle schools at some point as a four-year project, if you wait another year to do truth and taxation, now you're five years out. And we need 14 months from the start of construction to expand the high school. This is a tight timeline we're on, that we do this, we get truth and taxation done, we get money rolling in and we start construction, you know, winter of '26, like January '26. That's 14 months from that time point, it starts, clock is ticking, probably get students in the building. I, I feel like if we don't do this now, we're gonna have in three years, high schools that are 20% greater than are now. Same with elementary and junior highs or intermediates. Like, we're kinda at a crossroads here. Are we just gonna listen to public and say, you don't wanna spend more money? So we say we wanna spend more money and the consequence is what it is? And that we're on a five to seven-year plan to fix that in two years? Or do we say, we're the educators, we know what we need, we're gonna do a smaller plan to address these issues? It's kinda like I-15 expansion. They wait till they have so many houses here, it's congested, oh, we're gonna expand now. And then it's a year and a half, two years in construction in each phase. People are in good luck hell for a long time and then it gets better.
How, how much is the difference from the 10 and 20 bond to truth and taxation on the average?
25% less.
25% less?
Yeah, it's just basically.
It's only 25%, 75% less than the.
Well, so the, the, the total number was, if we do 60 here, 60, we'll call it 240, it's close there. It's about 25% of 240. It's gonna be about $20 increase from where we're at right now on the average home for the bond. So basic math, we brings us to about $5 more a month now on the average home. Now, we have some growth and it's gonna offset that. You know, things like lecture learning, other big developments coming in. Necor announced a big expansion, uh, that's 220 new jobs. So we're gonna have some things that are gonna offset that. But on average, it can be about $5 per household to raise $60 million. And that's conservative at a 5% interest rate. Rates come down this year, come down closer to four, four and a quarter. That number may be a lot less. It may be, you know, $3.50 or $4 a month. Those are unknowns, but conservatively estimate at 5% interest rate, which is probably high, but in case things change, it's about $5 per month per home.
I just had one idea of just, can we just build a brand-new high school and make the high school the middle school? And make the Alistair Harris the elementary school? And then we're just building one new school or two for both sides? I mean, if we, wouldn't that be simpler?
A high school is probably, the size that we need is probably $150 million, one of them. So about $300 million to do both ends.
The new high school that we were put in was $170 million.
In Weaver?
Yeah, Westfield High School.
That would be a conservative problem. That's, high schools are just the most, they're just.
So it's not the size of the building it costs, it's what goes inside those buildings.
Programs and just all the stuff.
You need about 50 acres. And then to divide Box Elder and Bear River kids into new school, that would be a nightmare. Cause I was a century, and it's hard enough getting kids to go to Bear Graham, Box Elder to split and to divide.
What would that be changing?
That would be a nightmare with parents.
If we just build one building to replace the two.
Oh, oh, that would be a lot. No, I meant one on each.
One on each.
Yeah.
Oh, one on each.
Yeah, sorry, I just meant, just build. You're right, that's cause I only think Bear River, but I do love Box Elder. But I only think Bear River. But I'll work on that, yeah, a new high school.
I have gone back and forth on a request, I know I was, I kinda, I brought this up at that previous meeting, and believe me, and like Julie said, I've been spinning this for, ever since. We walked out of that board meeting, which was just last month, right?
That was the longest month ever.
That work session, and it was the longest month ever, but out of that work session, all of us thinking like, this makes sense. We walked out of this room giving Cory basically the go-ahead without a formal vote, but we also.
To, to do the RFPs.
To do the RFPs, and so, and then I just got so nervous about asking taxpayers for money. And, um, I, our, our responsibility is to those who voted us in, that even, at least I believe, after I've thought about it and thought about it, my, my responsibility is to kids in classrooms and teachers trying to teach those kids in classrooms. And this needs to be done, we're behind, like Neil was saying, we're behind the game. And this allows us to start the process in a, in a piece, in a chunk that we can do without going to bond and a quarter of the cost. And it, more and more, the more I think about it and hear everyone's opinions, it makes sense to me. It, it is doing something while not putting it off another year or two. It, it's gotta be done, I just think it's gotta be done.
And I think that some people say, you're gonna do it anyhow, and we are not doing it anyhow. We are addressing the needs of our district, which we were elected to do. And we're not taking money from you for the two hundred and twenty, you said no to that, but we are still doing our jobs. That's, and I think that's, I'm just kinda backing up what you said Tiffany is like. My responsibility is to this district and these students, like, what's our mission statement? What's our values? And if we're not doing that, then we're not doing our jobs. And it, my job is not to please the taxpayers, I'm not trying to burden them. But, and I think kicking things down the road has, it's, I mean, we've talked about it before with when we went a long time with truth and taxation, we've seen it does not make anybody like us better, it just puts it down the road further. And I can defend that to anybody that wants to talk to me, and they don't have to agree with me, and there will be many people who don't. But I would be happy to have meetings, I would be happy to post things, I would be happy to have conversations with anybody who wanted to talk about saying, like, here's our priority, and here's where we think we're going as a district. And, and you said, and I wouldn't say you said no, but I would say, and this is how we've proposed to do it in a manageable way. And I, I would say, another argument for we're not doing it anyway is we're not doing the same plan. We, we changed it, we're not rebuilding two very expensive middle schools. We're coming up with the next best thing, which is making them smaller to reduce behaviors.
We're trying to get more life out of them.
Yes, and, and a big bonus for me is all of the parents that, you know, there's so many behavior conflicts at the middle school. Well, if it's really not working out, they have an option now to go to a different school, where that wasn't an option they had before. And I think that will help a lot, that if there's a major bullying conflict, well, congratulations, you get to go bully it, new kid, the other school out. So that, it gives more options there, and it gives us the ability to do things piece by piece that make a plan that we do, we start with this, and then in a year or two, we start on elementary.
So that's my question, if we are raising taxes for four point five million a year to try and get the high school additions, then how long is it before we would address the elementary? Are we talking, I mean, because we have a certain max that we can raise taxes.
We are far from our max.
So then are we gonna try and go out again in another year and say, okay, now we're gonna raise taxes again for elementary?
My hope was that we would be able to extend, put additions on to two of our, on each end and reboundry and unalleviate some of the pressure so that elementary schools were touched. But I haven't got affirmed if that's possible or not, I don't know if that was.
Well, Cory can talk about Lakeview, but there's not really room to expand there.
No, I know.
But if we did discovery and reboundry.
Discovery and.
Discovery, building, and then reboundry, right? Isn't that kinda what we've been talking about?
Is building really a good option, though? It's like clear out in La La Land.
There's a lot of Garland Elementary kids, but I get that it's far away, but they're close.
On the north side of Garland, it's.
Well, and I've gone, honestly, I mean, McKinley has five portables.
Yeah.
And I know McKinley, six, thank you.
Seven if goggles.
Don't be saying. Even if we said, because the growth is north, McKinley gets an, an addition, and Villa gets an addition, and we've started to, Gillo, and then Discovery gets an addition. I mean, I know it doesn't solve Lakeview. We're not gonna get Lakeview solved, or, although.
We have to rebound.
That it does, it does, I like the word, well, I, I really see the Box Elder Middle School. It's going to have to be there for a while, longer. And if, uh, the way we go to a six-eight model, we have property when it's time. The old bond drops off in twenty-nine, so that's gonna drop ten. My taxes went down twelve a month last, this past year went down twelve. So to go up five, I'm still down seven from this year.
But also, it's a very, didn't get taxed very last year.
I could, we could just, you know.
I did.
I did.
We could capture the bond too in, in two more years, right?
Yeah, I recapture that, and then you decide, you know, maybe, but it does get us.
That's my concern, is that if we go out with a heavy tax, truth and taxation, I don't think we're gonna win the, the trust, and I don't think a bond will pass in the near future.
Well, I guess that's the question.
We just do, I don't think we leave elementary up to a bond, that should be fair.
You know, I, I was hopeful that we could get a bond, and it's interesting, cash, school district, had a zero increase.
Zero revenue, we talking about that last year?
Fifty-eight percent said yes, and it was not gonna change your taxes. Whatever they were currently paying, that was their, and fifty-eight percent said yes on my taxes are not gonna increase. I think truth and taxation is rough, you've all, well, not all, you, you're gonna sit in a meeting, and there's gonna be twelve to fifteen people come in, and they're gonna say, my taxes are going up, and you're killing me.
It's not just the meeting, though, it's the phone calls, because they just, I mean, don't, don't downplay it.
Well, I'm not saying it's easy, I'm just saying, for twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two kids and their families and their future, these are fifty-year decisions. And these are, and it's kinda rough to go through these phone calls and this hour meeting that you have to go through. It's a little yucky.
Yeah.
Um, but it is not the same as two twenty. It is not the same tax amount, and it's not the same plan. If I would've thought about six-eight, I would've done that before we ever went to bond.
I'm sorry, can you tell me what six-eight is? I wrote that to.
Six-seven, eight, nine, twelve.
Okay.
I would've gone to the two middle schools before, but I didn't think of it until I was coming down the freeway going, I don't think I wanna be the principal of an eighteen-hundred middle school. An eighteen-hundred-sized middle school. I did not want that.
Six, seven, and eighth grader.
Six, seven, and eighth grader. But now, smaller schools, diversified, you don't have to mix all the kids all the way through. I think there are some benefits, we do need to address elementary, and I don't know how.
That's my question, can we address that with this truth and taxation? Could that be part of our, our priority?
How much can you go up on truth and taxation? What's the maximum?
I mean, I don't wanna.
It's somewhere between ninety and a hundred.
So I'm just saying, like, if we could address the elementary concerns and do the high school at the same time, I mean, I don't know what that looks like money-wise, and I think that's where Tiffany and I, when we were talking about this in that facilities advisory committee, that's, that's where, those are our pain points. And if we can alleviate pain, that's better for public perception than you're building a nice new facility at the high school.
What about?
Do you know what I mean?
This guy's thrown up, I think he's guilty. Uh, even though we know McKinley's old, but a wing on McKinley. And then building also, and then rebounding, take care of that.
Doesn't it fail two, three million?
Yeah, depends on what you put in it.
In the north, they had growth last year, in the south, we went down. And right now, Heidi Jo, are we losing three teaching positions from Tremont?
Yes.
We're, we're losing that many kids. Also, the last three years, we've been eight hundred to nine hundred.
Less than eighty fifty.
Less than eighty fifty in our, in our kindergartens, but we're losing nine fifty. A thousand, and the other end, graduating. Sorry, graduating. My point is, is next year, we could lose five hundred thousand for that interest. Plus, we could lose five, four to five hundred thousand for a hun- a hundred less kids. While there's still growth going on, that's the bizarre thing. We're still losing population while all this growth's going on, even though, boom, it's gonna hit us, then all of a sudden, we're gonna have a thousand kids.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, eleven hundred in the kindergarten, and it's just gonna blow our minds.
I think we increased a couple hundred kids this past year from twenty-three, twenty-four on October one counts. So we do have growth overall in the district.
With, in, in, in migration, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, immigration. And there's, there's stuff going down south, there's a couple of divisions going in down south. Um, I know that Nielsen Homes has a big tract down in South Willard that they're, um, I'm willing to build on it, they own it. Like, this is gonna come.
Well, it's just like this developer that has the property just to the north of, of the property that we own by the State Center.
Yeah.
They own that, I think that's ten, twelve acres, isn't it fourteen? And they tried to, they wanna buy our property.
Yep.
So there's, they're certainly talking about something down there.
Cory, what's gonna, you mentioned, like, do the full ninety and do an elementary on the north end at, like, North Park? Do an addition at Discovery and do the high schools, and do the full amount that.
Like, like at Discovery, if you wanna add on to that, I would suggest that you don't just do classrooms, you do, you do a second gym. So it depends on what you do.
Eight million?
Yeah, eight to ten.
And then twenty-six, twenty-eight, did we do North Park on the same property with staging if we? And we have twenty-two thou- twenty-two million in capital outlay reserve.
Reserve, yeah, but you, for example, we're gonna eat up three or four of that this year, and we'll get, we'll, they'll all get replenished, so we have a little bit of cushion there.
Yeah, but that could cover Discovery and possibly building if it.
Well, having my.
If you went to ninety instead of sixty, you could do the two high schools and an elementary on the north end.
Yeah, if you went to ninety, I don't, I wouldn't advocate spending, trying to bring down our capital reserve, but we need to have cash on hand to meet bond covenant requirements. Can't go in and get a loan at the bank and buying a house. You can't put all your savings on the house, you gotta have something in reserve to bill for, for unforeseen expenses like that. Same thing here, the banks wanna see us have cash on hand to operate and not put all towards capital.
What was it, though, that you were recommending you keep in there the other day at the, the building facility?
Oh, I, I said, I don't think you should go below about fifteen. And we're gonna eat some of that up with design costs. I mean, we don't, we haven't got the extra tax number yet, so if we commit to design costs, about four million is gonna get eaten up there to design these buildings.
Another thought is, is, and I wasn't part of the property discussion, I mean, there could be some money brought in.
I think there's about four million in property.
If you sold, if you sold Foothill, knowing full well that you're gonna add on to Discovery, especially if you have all that land back there, then anything in the north part, you could use some of that. That seems like prime real estate land, I don't know what you get out of it, but again, if you know you're selling. If you're selling that and adding on to Discovery, so anything in the north is gonna come into that area, then now all of a sudden, you've got Discovery's addition, if we built a, a new, uh, elementary school up north. There's sort of this feeling that they got shafted back in seventeen, but you could give them one. And again, we'll, we'll have to still.
That's where the growth is, it's not just about that.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the growth is, and I think that's why you have to do it there. But if we could do all of that under the legal requirements of ninety, that's still ten dollars a month. And it's a totally different plan, and we are trying to alleviate as many issues that they set our issues. Um, we're moving down in a really good direction. And yes, it's, it's, uh, it's hard, I mean, I, that's why I respect what you all do.
I think, um, I'm gonna sound like I'm, can't make up my mind, but, uh, it's hard. There, there were ten thousand people out in Box Elder County, twenty, twenty-seven thousand voters, there were ten thousand that voted for twenty-two, two hundred and twenty million dollar bond. So, we're not gonna make everyone happy, and I'm willing to, you know, take the heat and people angry or whatever they're gonna do, um, to, for the betterment of kids. But we just need to pay attention and be careful as we move forward, that, um, we did listen to the voters. And so, this is our plan, and we need to advertise that, make sure people understand, well, we did listen to you, and we need to pay attention to what people are saying, involve people in committees as we go forward. But, yeah, we need to do something, and I'm, I'm for truth and taxation to, to fix the issues that we have and for the, the betterment of kids, but we just need to pay attention.
I agree.
But, but that, that's out there, and, and we need to do what we can. We're not gonna convince everybody, there's gonna be a group of people, no matter what you do, they don't ever listen to us, they do what they want, um, but ten thousand people didn't support, you know?
Yeah.
And I'll bet you, out of those ten thousand people, it was mostly people with kids.
The overmount, well, I mean, majority didn't, we crashed and burned.
Right, so that's why we've gotta come up with a different plan.
But we only need, we only need to satisfy.
Four point five million a year for the, to try and chunk these down?
Yeah.
Or do, the, the other option is do nothing.
No, I think the other option is to try and do minimal and then go back and say, we heard you, would this plan be better? I think that's how, I would, you gain my trust.
What's, what's your plan?
What's minimal?
Decide what it is we need, um, if that is building a new elementary in the north part and, and trying to cover that with a minimal truth and taxation. And then going back and saying, okay, we've scrubbed it, here is another bond, it's asking for less, but you're the voters, you're the one whose money we are using, would you approve this?
In the last election, Tremont area voted in a higher percentage to pass it than Brigham City area. So now we give them a new elementary, and we come back and say, we need to build a new elementary in Brigham City. I think Tremont's gonna say, well, we got what we wanted, so we're not gonna help vote for that one down there. I mean, I, that's just the nature of the people, that's why we tried to balance it up and say, you're both getting something. If we give them that, I don't know why Tremont would vote for a new elementary down here, I.
I think there was a lot of wisdom when Keith told us all that there were too many moving parts in that bond. There were too many different reasons for them to vote no. And, uh, who knows? I don't know the amount that said, I'm fine with the taxes, but I don't want my sixth grader in with those seventh and eighth graders. Or I don't want my eighth, ninth grader in with the high school. If that, that could've been a lot of people's reason about no, that that was a moving part, that we know that those grade bands are what, you know?
I was just looking.
I think that there's wisdom, and there were too many moving parts in that bond, um, now we know.
This person voted because of that moving part, this movement.
So we're eliminating the moving parts, we're saying, here's our priorities as a district, here's the framework and our future plan and our plan for future growth, and we're going to build our schools in this model or whatever, like, do the smaller, middle, whatever, and then we're, then we're going to do it in small pieces because we know the appetite is not too, too much at once. So we're taking out those, as many moving parts.
If you wanna do small pieces, adding on the schools is your easiest pit. Sell, now building the schools, we can use our existing buildings that we have minus, uh, Foothill to add on for a much more cost-effective price, um, for the voters. And literally, we could add on Discovery, sell Foothill for the almost five million dollars that it's valued at. We have off, people asking us if it's available for sale. Sell some of that property, we could almost self-fund, self-fund and expansion Discovery without raising additional taxes for that purpose. So we can do those things in chunks and smaller chunks, building a brand-new school on site, tearing schools down, that's the most expensive way to go about this.
What was the district that you guys said only does truth and taxation?
Logan.
Logan, Washington District still district, only does truth and taxation, but they have a whole different, both of those have a whole different tax structure.
But wouldn't, wouldn't it be interesting to talk to their board members and see how their public has received that? Because I feel like, I feel like it's true that truth and taxation could be really harmful for our district, but if it becomes the norm, then it just becomes part of what it is.
It's the norm now, Alpine's splitting up because they. It's the norm now. Alpine splitting up because they couldn't pass a bond to fix all their aging schools.
Yeah.
And, and fund the growth on the west side, the west side Utah Lakes, here to the Springs and those places, couldn't get a bond for it. So they split up into three districts. Um, Davis said, we probably won't see a bond again because they don't wanna approve it, so we're going truth and taxation. That's the new way of going out there is, I mean, how long did Logan, or was it Cash that took to pass the bond? Probably three times to be able for it passed. It's, voters aren't voting for bonds en masse.
Yeah.
Well, I, I hate to complicate this, but something really occurred to me this week. I got pictures of my granddaughter singing at Bear Lake High School, excuse me, Bear Lake Middle School. And I went to high school at Bear Lake Middle School fifty years ago. And it was old when I went to high school fifty years ago, I think it was built in the fifties. About eight years ago, I had my fortieth class reunion, and we went into that building and right before they put. Two or three million dollars out of the high, the middle school, and it was quite amazing. And I know two or three million dollars eight years ago is probably a million now, but I guess my point is, is. I'm worried that we're never gonna be able to build new middle schools, so we're, somewhere in this plan, we've also gotta say, we're gonna dump some money into both Box Elder Middle and Bear River Middle. And make them as nice as we possibly can, and that's, that's all just part of this chunking because. Like I said, I'm pretty sure Box, or Bear, Bear Lake High School was built in the fifties, two stories. Kitty corner from the New Temple, it's right there, you can see out the front door. So I guess my point is, I, I don't think we're ever gonna get to do that, so we've gotta. You know, this is the plan to get us, to get us there and split it up so we're.
Well, if you go six-eight, it does take away, so there's not, they're overcrowded. I mean, Bear River Middle has three portables and Box Elder Middle School's eliminated five classrooms. If you go to six-eight and take out three hundred kids and there's twenty-five in the classroom. That's twelve classrooms, so what's the thing both those schools don't have? They don't have a commons area. Harrison Young, brand-new commons area, Box Elder and Bear River Highs, commons area. What don't Bear River and Box Elder have? Commons area. Where do kids get in trouble? Tight hallways and no place to go. So, I mean, not that we would, but you could tear down some walls, you still, you gotta still plan for growth. But you could tear down some walls and have some open spaces in both those schools and reconfigure for safety purposes. Box Elder Middle School, which is gonna be our most unsafe school real soon here, because you can walk in and go right and never go to the office. You can go in, go left and never walk into the office. So we're gonna have to, you know, we could reconfigure that a little bit, and I think there could be some life. Is it yucky? Yeah. Are the narrow halls? You bet. Is the ceiling short? Yes, but you take out thirty-three percent of the kids out of that school. And it's not quite as bad, and it could last another five, ten, or whenever we feel like the next appetite.
Another four point five chunk to go with it if that's.
Well, that, every time, every time we wait, every time we wait, there's a seven percent increase according to our.
Our point is that you could, you could add on to a middle school for ten to twelve versus for you to build a new one.
I'm just saying, if you just do the chunking, we're not gonna get a bond fast.
Well, that's the, that's the point of discussion here is that, that is the new way.
Just replaces the bond, yeah.
And now that's a new office, and then all that, it becomes.
And at Bear River, all those middle, that used to be their commons, that was the first, first sixth grade year that they built all of the hall classrooms. That used to be their commons. They hated us because we took their space away.
But you know, the, if you do a six-eight model, you certainly can replace the middle school on the property. You can keep the newest gym in the district, it's the largest, newest. You still keep the auditorium, yes, that has un-reinforcement re, but so does Bear River High, Box Elder High. But you can have your auditorium, you have your gym, you have your, whenever we decide to grow it, we could decide to grow it. We deal with our elementaries, um.
We lose the people that are, or we eliminate the concern from the people about us abandoning a building in the middle of town.
Yeah.
There's a few more, but that's another moving part that hurts.
They want design, they want designs in the building, so now you have to say, let's, let's put the design on that we just built, you know?
Now that was a problem.
I just concerned, like, the, I just don't think, um, maybe I'm just pessimistic, I just, it's been seventeen years since a bond passed. And that's the longest time, and it still didn't pass, it went down, I mean, I think there was other, other issues. But I don't see people saying, oh yeah, you're right, now we think we can spend two hundred million because that's, and I don't think, we're gonna, it's not gonna get any cheaper. I don't think it's gonna get cheaper though, how are we not gonna see that much? That's my question, like, with, with our needs.
Family budgets, you do what you can, but if, if we do the addition at Discovery, you said we could bring in five more classes?
Five or six.
I think we talked about ten to twelve.
Oh, you told five to six.
We have, we have.
He said, I'm sorry, Cory and I had a different conversation, I talked to Steve and then I talked to Cory and so, yeah. So that's where the gym and, yeah, ten classrooms.
If we had ten, that's two hundred and fifty kids, two hundred to two.
Then we're at seven fifty there, we're at five hundred now, we'd like to be seven hundred and have some growth room, you know? But seven fifty's kind of the cap, we would like to not be more than that, so.
So eight million, you could do ten classrooms plus a gym.
For how much did you say? Eight, well, you threw out eight million, you said ten classrooms and a gym.
It'd be eight to ten million. We could, we could put the addition on Fielding, just do classrooms and a hallway. Probably five classrooms, I think, is what we could do there.
Is it the same size as Garland?
And it's, um, not quite, not quite.
Classroom smaller and two smaller than Three Mile, something really.
But we could probably do that for about three million.
Well, they put two like this and one on the end.
Something really interesting we noticed the other day is, we have, was it twenty-five classrooms at Lakeview? For a hundred and twenty more students than we have at Three Mile with thirty-four classrooms. So seven more classrooms at Three Mile for like a hundred and twenty or something fewer students.
So if we did, going back to the Discovery, if we did the ten classrooms and the gym. Are you thinking that we would still bus first, I mean, K one, or would we reboundary?
Reboundary.
Reboundary.
So siblings go together, yeah.
I got a suggestion, I think we could keep talking this until eleven tomorrow. Um, let's, we need to get a, get a plan put together. And I think we've heard everyone's input, we wanna try to be as efficient as we can so that we don't lose trust of the, of the community. We're, we're gonna do it efficiently and smartly, and let's put the plan together, lay out our priorities and.
Cory needs to walk away from this needing knowing.
To go out for our.
Yeah, we did.
Have our keys on hold or to continue?
I think we need to continue, that's my feeling.
Mine also.
I, I agree with that, if, if.
Otherwise, if we don't.
Continue with truth and taxation, it doesn't pass, then we eat, eat it and we pay them out of our budget, but.
How, how much are we talking?
Four million.
So do you need a board vote on that to go with our?
No.
I don't think you, you can't take an action vote right now.
We can't, but we, we don't need one, all we need is to approve, approve a CMGC, that's what we voted.
Well, when we select one, but.
Yes.
So that'll be next month.
I'm just asking, do you need a board vote to do what you're asking, or you're just eating our input?
I, I just wanna know it.
I think there's, I think the question, and maybe I'm wrong here, but the question is, is do we have an appetite to go to truth and taxation? We do what Brian just said, which is firm up some numbers, get the plan, and then you have to decide, but if, if truth and taxation's off the table. Then we don't need, we do not need the RFP.
But also the RFP though, I need to know, are we gonna go with the nine, twelve addition, cause that's what the RFP's for.
Yeah.
So we have to decide, are we, is that the direction we're going and hopefully pull these, and hopefully can these, I mean, we don't have every piece in line. But we do need to know, are we going forward with the nine, twelve with truth and taxation? I think that's.
And then also funding an elementary school or additions, that all could be part of that. But I think the key, my feeling is, is truth and taxation in everybody's appetite. Cause if it is, then I think we move forward, we get the plan set up and we say, this is where we're headed, and if everybody's like. You're doing it anyway, well, let me just show you our new plan, and here's our new plan, and this is our face.
Our different plan.
It's a new plan, it's a new plan.
New different plan.
A new different plan. And I want you to know that new plan was because of their feedback, not because we thought we were stupid. They did give us some good feedback and we've come up an outside-the-box thinking of, how can we make this work? And I think that's good, it's not like we just, I mean, oh, we got beat two to one, and so now nothing, we're like, okay. Where are we gonna go? And I heard a lot of things, where are you gonna build this, where's the property, what's it gonna look like? Why are you wasting the middle school? I heard a lot of things, we're addressing all of those. And we can get their feedback, and they can come in and say, you know what, we're gonna add here, so how would you, what do you think that would look like? Or maybe there's some things we don't know, and then maybe that's where we do ask improvement, people that have. Upcoming secondary schools or kids that are, parents that are only in the elementary level in those heavy areas that are overcrowded.
Sort of what Brian said, we going forward or not?
I say we go forward. I say we go forward.
Go forward with the RFPs and.
And, and let's get a plan put together and.
Get our committee members that.
We'll get community members involved in what it looks like.
So that when we're, when the RFPs are approved and we start meeting with architects in two months, three months.
Could start sooner than that, probably.
Then we have our committee members selected that they can sit in on those.
The North Committee and the South Committee, cause each one of them's different, and that's what they did in seven, seven.
And then that demographer is six months out, but something that we could have so that we're.
Yes, do the RFP for the demographer and.
See, I think if, if we do do this, having them come on, I think that'll build trust as well, so we might be losing some, but also building if we bring them in, so I think it's good.
So I guess.
But as we start putting these numbers together, we need to remind the architects and remind everybody that. We're, we, we don't live in Park City. Yep, so.
Well, I don't know how much impact it's gonna have, but I understand you get a lot of lumber from Canada.
Steel and aluminum too, if tariffs hit steel aluminum too.
So there's fifteen to twenty-five.
I thought our president said we didn't eat Canada.
Well, most schools unveil lumber.
We use more steel aluminum and just lumber.
Cause you actually ten, ten to fifteen to twenty percent more than they are now, so I.
Yeah. I know I've said it a thousand times, I'm sorry, but I would really appreciate it if our high school administrators could be on that selection committee.
So on the selection committee or on?
On the selection.
Okay.
For the RFP?
Okay.
I, we're just one of them or?
Yeah, we, we, we could, we could pull, um.
Just two more people.
Yeah, two more people onto there, and so board members on the facilities advisory committee.
Karen, other than Julie.
Me and Karen are locked, I'm not gonna be, she's gonna be, I'm not on the committee, but she's on the.
Selection, okay.
If you would like to be.
You don't know if you even wanna be?
I'm not in support of it, so I think you're gonna want to have somebody who's in support of it.
Okay, all right, well, brief.
Well, two's enough, I, I mean, one's enough, but two's, two's enough if, if the two of you have time. So. Okay.
It's North Park, that's a hundred and twenty students more for twenty-five classrooms. And Three Mile has thirty-four classrooms for five hundred thirty students, Lakeview has twenty-two classrooms for five seventy-five.
Twelve different classrooms, twelve more classrooms at Three Mile than Lakeview.
Five portables, so, but, so it's really, I mean, it's gonna have five, so twenty-seven if you count those as classrooms, but. It's just really a good comparison, like, we're fitting North Park with a hundred and twenty more students into. Three Mile classrooms and like few, not many fewer classrooms with more students. And I don't think that goes into say like, oh, shift the kids to Three Mile, but if you walk through Three Mile, this is a comfortable building. It feels like the number of students is appropriate for the size of the building, and that's not the idea.
I don't have to say it.
I just thought that was interesting.
That is interesting.
It is.
A building comparison.